United States of America. And in two hundred and fifty four, which it stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah.
You did just fine. All right, approval of the minutes, Debbie.
I request a motion for approval of the regular meeting minutes of November thirteenth in this special meeting slash work session of November twenty six.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Okay, so we have an item that's later in the agenda, which as I always do, I'll call it again later on. But Chief Wright, would you like to do the swearing in of one of your new officers? Do you fire both? That'd be perfect.
I'm looking to go through the appointment of Ohio law office full time firefighter EMT instead of great. For the five party agreement, September twenty four, two thousand and twenty four, there is a come down. And the successful application of high risk fire protection on fifteen more results. We were required to obtain certification of high wire state inspector or S R G G shelter every one year. We're serving a one year probationary period of all associated expenses we got in the country. Just to clarify, this was completely under security at all.
Okay, great. All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a, anyone would like to make that motion?
Motion.
So second. We have a motion and a second.
That's right.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Uh, yes. Shall we do the administer the oath?
And we're gonna talk to it slow because. This is a real test.
Make out chief.
All right. I state today, I file below. Do solemnly swear or affirm. Do solemnly swear or affirm. That I will support the constitution. That I will support the constitution. The laws of the United States of America. The laws of the United States of America. The state of Ohio. State of Ohio. And Pierce Township. And Pierce Township. To which I'm appointed. To which I'm appointed. And to the best of my ability. And to the best of my ability. And I'm no faster this time. Will discharge the duties of this office. Should discharge the duties of this office. I basically, this guy's probably like really nervous and I'm like turning him around. I will faithfully and honorably. Will faithfully and honorably strive to protect our future. Strive to protect our future. Protect, protect the safety, lives and property. Protect the safety, lives and property. Of our citizens and my fellow members. Of our citizens and our fellow.
Now, one the church up was the very last. You got one of those set up. All right, with that, thank you. Congratulations.
You're gonna sell a picture of them.
What are y'all supposed to get? Now you see why people don't want to work for our fire department. They have to go through that. All right, we're up to departmental updates. Uh, let's start off with Chief Brockstrom.
The, our annual shop with the police event. Where we pick three deserving children, one from each of our grade schools. To go on a shopping spree with us at our local Walmart. Uh, and then we have a toy drive the same day at Walmart. Where we're partnering with the fire department. To collect toys for the needy. And so we, we're gonna have a big day on Saturday.
Excellent. Okay, that's all you have? All right, next Chief Wright. I know you're probably a little tired after all that.
I'm exhausted. I have a brief update on the fire engine, just so you're aware, I've got some pictures of the progress. Some exhilarating, if you can't see. It's the rough fabrication of the cab.
Wow, amazing.
So that's what a million dollars gets us.
See it really well from here, too.
The, uh. Everything's been done for the financing, um, thanks to Ms. Why and Brenda. Um, that's all done, the money's been deposited, so now we just await the arrival of the truck, so thank you for everything and the support to get it done. The next thing is recognition of one of our members. He's actually stuck in traffic and not here yet, so I don't want to hold things up. So Eli Hammond's been with us at the township for four years, spent a full time firefighter EMT for the past two. Uh, if you remember, two years ago, we were successfully awarded an assistance to firefighters grant written by Deputy Chief Masterson to help fund paramedic training for members. Elijah was one of the people that quickly expressed an interest and a desire to attend. He applied and accepted the paramedic program hosted by Cincinnati Fire Department. Program lasts approximately eleven months. It's an intense, time consuming and demanding program. That's almost equivalent to an associate's degree in just under a year. Program consists of over eleven hundred hours of classroom time. Labs, various clinical setting rotations at hospitals. And ride time hours on an ambulance as a student putting into practice what's taught in the classroom with working with a preceptor. Cincinnati Fire Department program has a pass rate eighty six percent on your first attempt for licensure, which is pretty significant. Eli was no different in that regard. He put his head down, approached the program with success as the end goal. Kept his nose in his books, constantly studying material, maintaining focus and completing all of his necessary assignments and clinicals on time. He passed exam on his first try, did all this while working full time, helping around home when he could. And helping care for his toddler son. It's an extremely difficult endeavor endeavor made possible by his determination, hard work and tremendous support from his family and wife Kirsten. So I'm extremely proud to announce our newest paramedic, Mr. E. Elijah Hammond's. Great job, Eli. We're happy for you and look forward to watching your career continue to grow. So I think huge win with the grant funding and Eli did a tremendous job, so we're happy to have another paramedic onboard.
Yeah, he's unfortunately stuck in traffic, so.
He is, they, he went to Scarlet Oaks today for one of their interview days and they left up there at four thirty or so and they're sitting in on two seventy five somewhere.
Well, let's give him applause anyway, right? All right, um, the last thing I have is.
Aedes in the parks. So House Bill was passed earlier this year, uh, we worked with Katie, um, Caroline to get some clarification. So as it kind of turns out, we got into it, it looks like we're gonna have to get Aedes for three of our, three of our five parks that have the ability to have organized sports, so. Working with service department and John, um, trying to figure out kind of where the best place would be. Looking at cabinet options to something that's secure, something that is tamper resistant and, um. Well, we'll come back to you when we have some more information. I just wanted you to keep a, keep you abreast of it and. You'll have sticker shock probably in a few months because we're probably looking at somewhere around nine, ten thousand dollars to do all three parks, maybe a little less depending on the cabinets and.
Wow. Okay. And Eli, if you could stand up. Now we can apply. He, he said some very, very nice things about you, um, and then we all applauded, but then we found out you were stuck in traffic, so we took it back and now here you go.
This is good, you got the applause.
Yeah, you got the important part.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, so A D, we did the A Ds, now we go to the service department and you do not look like John Coler.
No, I do not. I'm actually sitting in for John, but I just want to give you an update on the cemetery wall, the right side of the wall has been completed. And the left side of the wall is almost done, so that was the damage from the Amazon truck, but almost done with the.
All right, so the wall's almost done.
Correct.
Right? Somebody needed a package really badly in the cemetery. Interesting. All right, parks and green space.
Good evening. See just update on events, we did have our whole work day on November the sixteenth. And a little bit lighter turnout this, this fall, but we should put it up today, we accomplished what we wanted to get accomplished, so that was good. So we are into our twenty twenty five planning, um, we did order Easter bunny costume and backdrop, thank you Lord for doing that. Um, so that's on its way, I mean relatively high cost when it comes right down to it, it's gonna. Help us have that so we're not relying on someone to, to be there, um, and then cancel at the last minute, so. Let's see, parade was last Sunday, the weather was great, shout out to Michelle for all of her efforts in putting that together. Really, it was very nice. Now just figure a lot of, a lot of loads, I think weather had a lot to do with that, that was fantastic. Uh, let's see, tomorrow evening from Sunday, we've got the annual Christmas tree lighting, uh, I guess the lights are on that tree, we just need to make sure that a cord gets there, um. Tomorrow, so we've got the, uh, same as last year, we've got the Alpha, the, um. The acapella group, the competitive acapella group from West Claremont High School as well as brass quartet. Uh, we'll have free hot chocolate from, uh, Big B Coffee. And they'll, um, we're actually, we ordered more this year, um, just because we seem to run out fairly quickly. Um, so it is gonna be kind of chilly, so those who come out, please make sure you dress for the, um, send a shout out to Greg. Wright for, uh, he had kind of a great idea of doing some, getting some projection. Thanks for the trees, we'll add a little bit to it, so thank you for that. And, uh, also had a really good idea to try and put together for in future, a little bit too short, noticed to get it together this year, but do kind of like a little commemorative. Pierce Township, uh, Christmas song, we put on the tree, but also gives the people to come to the event, so we'll look at that for next year relatively minor cost and. Great idea again, thanks to Chief Wright.
He's just full of them, huh?
I know, he's great. Full of ideas.
That's why he gets paid.
So yeah, just wanna say thank you to him.
All right.
Uh, Doug, real quick, this is really off the cuff, but, uh, what about reaching out to Big B to do a hot chocolate for our tree lighting? And they could put a big, like, you could tell them they could put a big, like, Big B advertisement or something.
Well, we could do that.
I mean, see if they're interested. Because we always run out of hot chocolate there.
Yeah, we, we have them providing more this year. Um, so, but yeah, I think it's a good idea that.
Just a thought.
Give them a plug anyway, I mean, they, they provide the bins for, which I think has their logo on it, but it would be. Good if they wanted to have somebody there.
They could put a little like, yeah, like a little, I don't know, one of those little A frame type of advertisement things, you'd be out somewhere in front of it.
Good idea.
I mean, you know, the cost of the coffee or the hot chocolate would probably even been one.
Yeah.
If they're interested.
See, I mean, they, they've been helpful, uh, to us the past few years in doing it and they have a charge for it, so, you know, but yeah, it would be a good plug.
I'd be decent advertising, I mean, we get hundreds of thousands of people at that, maybe millions, perhaps. So we, we do, we get a fair amount of people though.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, uh, Michelle, do you want to, uh, fill us in a little bit about? The, uh, the parade, I know we talked about it just a second ago, but there is, uh, a matter that I think the board needs to consider. Yeah, well. I like to sneak up like that.
All right, um, quick note, as I, I do after every parade, I just do a follow up. Um, we have approximately thirty entries, multiple police and sheriff's departments. With their vehicles, multiple fire V M S vehicles, um, Pierce and Batavia Township maintenance vehicles, so thank you guys very, very much. Um, one band and one stand on a sleigh. Um, I'd like to take the time to thank the following, all the police, fire, safety, uh, personnel for showing up and showing out, you guys are always a hit for the, uh, the crowd. That's there. Uh, Pierce Township's maintenance personnel for always assisting me in decorating and executing it all. Um, I'd like to thank my sponsors, the Beach One Automotive Group, Purgers Marketplace, Big Daddy's Marketplace, Stuart Conrad Roofing, and L J Traffic Control. Um, I'd like to thank the Grand Marshal Chief John Adams and the Ohio Landstar Group. And mostly I'd like to thank the residents who show up each year. And that's why I do it, that's, they're the reason that I continue year after year after year. To put this parade on, so I thank everybody.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Well, we can't get away yet. There is an item that in the past we have given a donation from the, from Pierce Township, um, toward the parade. And I think you guys had wanted to know if Pierce is going to continue that moving forward. It's probably going to require a motion tonight if we want to do that, but if you could describe what it is that we have been, have given in the past, I think it's what, five hundred dollars in the past?
The, um. I reached out to different businesses this year, um, because someone did say, can I be a sponsor? And I was like, sure you can. I'm gonna say no.
We'll work it out.
Exactly, um, and so I've, I've had sponsorships from smaller businesses, uh, a hundred bucks up to five hundred dollars. Um, just to give you a rundown, my one day, one million dollar insurance policy costs five hundred dollars. Uh, once, it, it varies, it goes from four twenty to four eighty, that's the range I've had in the past ten years. Um, the signs that I get from A and A Safety are about four, four, five hundred dollars each, depending upon. If he can give me a break and if I can, so we talking. Um, the banners, I bought two new banners this year, that was three hundred and fifty dollars. Um. What else was there? There's just incidentals, I mean, I, it, the parade is never a money making business for my group. It's just, um, paying the bills and making sure everyone has a great time and that it's, it's safe.
Right.
So.
Right, so what do we, I'm actually. We need a motion to continue our sponsorship at five hundred dollars. Um, for the, um, for the Christmas parade. So move.
Decken.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call, please, Debbie.
Uh, Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes, and by the way. I remember to do it.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, so moving on, we've gone to Parks Green Space, we're up to Eddie, your administration and welcome aboard.
All right, thank you.
Our new administrator over there. We're not gonna give you a standing ovation, we, that's after six months, okay?
Appreciate that, thank you.
It's up to the crowd, really.
We actually, uh, this, this might come as a surprise, we've gotten a couple more, uh, lighting petitions started coming back in. And we're still, I believe, under the threshold, but I wanted to at least start the conversation with you guys about. Maybe formalizing the process and setting some more parameters. Uh, Fiscal Officer Schwan, I spoke about this where it's kind of. Um, there, there's probably a lot of people who no longer live in the township or, you know, are filled out by people who, who aren't actually in Sedona Ridge anymore. So what I was thinking was we could scope out general parameters, advertise it and maybe set a deadline.
Or perhaps do it again.
Yeah.
Start fresh.
Right, well, obviously count the ones that have just come in.
Yeah.
Um, but kind of reblast it out.
Is this for the lighting district?
It is, yes.
Okay, did we set a horizon on that?
We never did.
No, just left it on the website.
Yeah, wow.
Is the infrastructure still in there?
I believe so, yeah.
Part of it.
But they're, but they were slowly taking, taking it out.
Right. So can we deadline it at least and collect all the data and kind of create a cutoff time now that all the data before now can be collected and, and. Essentially calculated so that. We have some idea of what it was before.
Yeah, we could definitely, we could, we have, um, we definitely have the data for, for what it was before. The problem is a lot of it's two, two years old.
Yeah, so what's the, what's the, the thought that we're gonna completely start this process over?
Well, I'd say, I think we have about five new petitions in now, and so what we could do is. Put, put information out on our website, um, and blast it out, out elsewhere on Facebook and so forth and formalize, say, hey, we're collecting this until. You know, mid February or March or whatever it might be. And then calc, you know, retaliate back at that point.
So the, the, as far as the cost goes, will that?
We would be assessing.
Recalculated.
We would be assessing their taxes like legendary run.
I understand that, but I mean, as far as since part of the infrastructure may or may not be gone, will it be more costly at this point? For the individual homeowners, since so much time has passed and maybe some of the pieces are gone, rates have gone up, whatever, you know? Is that something that you, we're gonna look at or you're gonna do?
Yeah, so that's a good point, if, if one of the poles was taken down, for instance, that would cause it to be incrementally higher. I don't, I don't think there's a significant amount of poles that have been taken out in Sedona, but. We can, we can definitely look into that and work, and work with Duke.
So before we like, you know, get too far into this, essentially sort of like the basic concept behind it is that. Uh, we put out a poll to the residents to see who was interested in essentially having a lighting district, which townships don't typically do. Right, that's typically a city or a village or somebody will do a lighting district, but townships don't do lighting districts. So when the city, in the village or city or whatever dissolve. Then there was that left paying part where they were providing light and a township doesn't typically do that, so. We kind of had to figure out what's the appetite for people to pay for that in a lighting district, essentially, right?
Right.
And so we kind of had to throw that out and see who wanted to do it, just to recap all this quickly. And then in order for us to even put it in front of the board, we needed a certain percentage of people to. Say that that's something that they would be in favor of, right?
Exactly.
And so we needed at least, I think it was fifty percent, right?
Actually, it was like fifty plus one.
Fifty plus one percent, and that would just be to get that initiative in front of the Pierce Township Board. And then we could then make a decision on that, right?
Yeah, right, that's generally.
So many HOAs and things like that, if you're gonna make some fundamental change to what people pay. You know, if somebody, let's just say somebody bought a house between when that lighting district was dissolved and now. They bought a house under the premise that they don't have to pay additional amount for lighting district, right? And they bought that house and they've settled in and they don't anticipate this extra expense. And then we come back and put that expense on them, so oftentimes if you're gonna try to do something like that. From like an HOA's perspective, you need a hundred percent of the signatures in the neighborhood, like typically. To do something like that, because there's a bunch of people that, does that make sense?
It, it does, but the, the difference is that Sedona Ridge doesn't have one. So the, so this is just.
The only reason I throw that out is from a, from a conceptual perspective, from, from a logic perspective, and so. If you bought a house between when we've been messing around with this and now. Then you bought it under the premise that you don't have an additional lighting district tax fund.
Right.
Basically, and then if we were to go and now retroactivate something like that. You see how involved in this?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so that's a really good point as far as like, that's kind of part of our reasoning where some of those are so old, we didn't want to. Cause any, you know, inadvertent issues like that. So what, what I can do is I can scope out this project more or less, bring it back to you guys by the first, you know, January, because. I think, I believe the last time we did this, we included all of Sedona Ridge.
Yeah.
Now, we can map out more or less what we just received and it might be, it might just be, um, a couple of the smaller cul-de-sacs at the, at the bottom of Sedona Ridge. You know what I mean? And then we might be talking fifty percent of ten versus fifty percent of, you know, a hundred, that sort of thing. Well, I'll reach out to the residents and figure out. How much of them are on board and kind of how we scope this thing out.
Well, just, I mean, as I recall. When we've gone through this. Um, we've had this petition open. For two and a half, three years now.
Yeah.
And we were only up to like thirty five percent and stuck there at about thirty five percent. Some of the subdivisions in what used to be Amelia, they still have their lights on because they have HOAs. And so they're still, I can't remember which, which ones anymore, but. They still have their lights on and then there are lights that we keep on at different intersections throughout Amelia and right around Grow Park and Shank Park. Um, but other than that, the lights have been pretty much shut, shut off, some of the poles I do know have been taken out. So, so that's, that's actually happened. Um, but again. We've hovered at thirty, thirty five percent. For, you know, three, three and a half years. Um, want to be sympathetic, but at the end of the day, it doesn't sound like the public, all of the public or even half of the public are, are on board with it, so. I am, I'm, but you know, I'm certainly willing to, to throw it back out there and see what, you know, what people want to do.
And I agree a hundred percent with everything you're saying, Alan, thirty five percent stuff, but then the other element that you add now. That this has gone on so long as you do have people and that, that's the reason I brought the HOA, like analogy, it was just an analogy, so if I bought a house between then and now. I didn't expect to have an expense like that and all of a sudden expense like that gets levied on me.
Right.
So now essentially we have that problem.
Right, right, you know, I, I get that, but the other thing too is that we don't know how many people who are, who had signed a petition years ago. Actually even live there anymore.
Well, that's my whole point, so you have a certain amount of people that have bought between now and then. At least you have some, it's not zero.
True.
And then you have, uh, the fact that we only have thirty five percent to begin with.
Right.
So.
Yeah, exactly, you know, come back with a, you know, maybe in the January meeting, um, come back with another report, see, tell us what. Tell us what it looks like, you know, tap into that and see how many of those, what's the validity rate at this point and, you know? And, and check, and I think that Pete, Pete's point is well taken too, if there are any additional costs that have driven up that original. Uh, the assessment that we originally put on those petitions. Cause that could very much change. Even the people who signed it before.
Good.
That price has skyrocketed, they may, may not, they may not be interested in it now either. So if you could do that, that'd be great, if you guys are okay with that.
I'm okay with that, I just, the cost of staff time and everything, like, let's keep it general. It costs generally a increase of, you know, lighting or general cost of living or something.
I don't know how big. Sedona is, how many residents are there? But because we do the legendary run. Their bills around eight to nine thousand dollars a month for their life.
But that's for the totality of their lives, it's not like one homeowner.
Right.
Just make sure that's clear.
Home, yeah.
That would be brutal.
Okay.
It's like two hundred and some dollars a year.
All right, Eddie, what else you got?
So, um, we had our O T R M A risk assessment, most everything went well, we, um, always, always get homework from those assessments and, uh. They're due January tenth, so we're working with department heads and staff just to kind of check items off the list, anything that'll, that is a policy related, we'll bring back to the board. Uh, as far as their recommendations go.
Okay.
With twenty twenty four coming to a close, uh, we're at the time to review and discuss kind of our progress on the twenty twenty four goal setting. And hopefully set twenty twenty five's goals. Uh, my recommendation would be to meet sometime in the next thirty days, if this board would like, um, maybe we can. Append a meeting to our upcoming January meeting or we could set another time as well.
Okay.
Whatever your preference is.
Set a work session?
Yeah, should we do that now?
We can do it now?
Let's do it. Uh, early January after the first of the year, is that what you're thinking, Eddie?
Yeah, that'd be good.
So I'll make a comment that since the. Mack Bridge has been partially destroyed, my commute is that much twice, twice what it was, so unfortunately I can't get here. As early as I ordinarily otherwise could on Mondays and Tuesdays, uh, it's just that. It's a two hour and fifteen minute, excuse me, an hour and thirty minute commute sometimes, depending on. Which way I try to go.
So our regular board meeting is on the eighth, right? Of January.
So how about this following Wednesday?
Yeah, the following Wednesday could work.
Fifteen. Okay, sound good.
Uh, time?
Five thirty?
I can make that.
All right, all right, we got it. It's gonna be a work session, right? All right. We got it.
All right, and the last thing I have is, uh, staff have been doing cybersecurity awareness training. Uh, we're adjusted around, we're adjusted around forty percent completion, uh, so forty percent of staff completed the training or as of early this week. Uh, and the training will be due December thirteenth, so we'll try to get to a hundred percent by that time, if not, we can reopen the window, but making progress. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Eddie.
Sure.
All right. Is there anything else? That we need to discuss under that section, otherwise we'll move on to new business. Debbie, you're up.
I request the motion for approval of the payment of payroll for the month of October. Be November.
So we're gonna get paid twice for October?
Yeah.
Okay.
November in the amount of four hundred and sixty seven thousand two seventy six twenty nine.
Uh, do we need to amend that motion as to what's listed or what? What do you, we can just quick, make a quick verbal amendment, they just don't want to approve something that's.
It should be November.
November. Okay, I'll make the motion with the amendment, uh. November. Okay, I'll make the motion with the amendment of, uh, it's November twenty twenty-four to approve the expenses in the amount of four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-nine cents.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and any discussion on that, uh, hearing non-roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
I'll have to amend this one too, Nick. I request a motion for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of November in the amount of six hundred and nineteen thousand, three sixty-one oh six.
I should want Pete to do this one.
So moved.
But you gotta make the amendment, Pete.
As amended for November twenty twenty-four.
In the amount of?
Uh, for six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars and six cents.
There you go. Gotta get it right, Pete.
Second.
Sounds good.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Uh, hearing non-roll call please.
Um, Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes. All right, Debbie, you're still up.
Yep. I request a motion to pay the Bureau of Workers' Compensation in the amount of sixty-five thousand, one sixty-seven for twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh, any, uh, further discussion? Hearing non-roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
I request a motion to pay Ohio Public Works Commission for the Bradbury Road payment in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents in the coal erosion, erosion mitigation in the amount of one thousand, twenty-one dollars and seventy-three cents for a total of six thousand, four hundred and three dollars.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Roll call please.
Mr. Kemp Alice?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And I do have one more request.
I knew you would.
Um, we need to set a date for a cleanup meeting.
Yes.
For the end of December. So if we could set that now.
Right? You wanna do it on the thirtieth? With Christmas being, you know, on a Wednesday.
I'm okay with that.
That's, uh, Monday, the thirtieth, so, oh. That's fine with me. It'll be, uh, a little bit later before I can get here before, because of the traffic.
Once a little bit later than me.
So hopefully by quarter after six, six thirty.
Two, six thirty.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And also I did get some good news in regards to, um, the, um, workers comp.
Hold on just a second. You were okay with six thirty, right?
Okay, okay.
Our rate with, with the Ohio Job and Family Service, our rate did go down.
Oh, good.
It went down to, it was point nine oh percent, it went down to point five oh percent.
Wow. It's just.
To let you know.
It's really great. All right, are you done?
I am.
Good. Uh, Chief Rocksherman, you're up.
I request a motion to revise the job description for police detective. The trustees approved the previous job description for this assignment on September ninth, twenty fifteen. The proposed revision clarifies that the length of assignment to this position is at the discretion of the police chief. Additional language is added to ensure that detectives are available for temporary uniform duties if there are staffing shortages and a requirement for detectives to mentor patrol personnel.
Okay.
So moved.
Do you have questions, comments?
Um, yeah, do you think you may set a time, like frame on this at some point in the future, perhaps? Like something consistent and.
Well, I mean, so there could be possibilities where a detective is not performing well in that assignment or, you know, it takes a certain amount of time for a detective to get up to speed. Um.
That makes sense. No, 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 that makes sense. I understand what you're saying. Yeah. Okay, I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes. All right, uh, Chief, you're still up.
I request a motion to eliminate the job description for police investigator due to the investigators being classified as police detectives in the most recent colle- uh, collective bargaining agreement.
All right, do we have a motion?
Uh, motion?
Expand upon that slightly, Chief.
Okay, so, uh, we had two, uh, police investigators previously. The latest, uh, union contract, uh, amended the positions to be detective positions because they all perform basically the same job function. So that, uh, we have three detectives now instead of two investigators and one detective.
So this motion is essential to bring things back into alignment with the, uh, police union contract.
Correct.
I got you. I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Chief?
I request a motion to pay the annual renewal invoice for Leeds Online for two thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars. This software is an investigative tool used by our patrol officers and detectives.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Hearing, uh, is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Chief, you're still up.
Finally, I make a motion to purchase two custom-made vehicle storage cabinets from American Woodworking in Amelia for four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. If approved, ARP funds would be used for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. Chief Wright, your turn.
I request a motion to accept the resignations of part-time firefighter EMTs Kay Levincent and Oliver Javicki.
So moved. Second.
And we have a motion and a second, or is there any further discussion on that matter? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
And Mr. Freeman.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. I request a motion to approve the annual payment for contracted services to Richmond Fire and EMS in the amount of ten thousand dollars for fire EMS coverage for the approved portions of the Ohio Town, of Ohio Township pursuant to the previously approved contract, noting Ohio Township has already submitted the five, submitted five thousand dollars to Pierce Township to go towards this payment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further roll call, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you. I request a motion to approve the emergency repair for the E1 fire engine to Best One Tire Service of Mid-America in the amount of three thousand, forty dollars and twenty cents for new rear tires for the truck.
That, that almost sounded like you were doing an advertisement in the middle of the.
Open for a discount.
When you're looking for tires, go to, yeah, okay.
So moved.
Good job, Craig. So, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing non-roll call please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the stand-in for John. Hit it, Laura. Let's see how you can do.
Service Department Director John Kohler requests a motion to promote Trevor Smith to the position of Maintenance Worker Four at the established rate of twenty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents starting on the November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four through December seventh, twenty twenty-four payroll.
So moved.
Sa- second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes. Was that your first motion you've ever made?
Yes.
Wow, good job.
Perfect. John, you're up.
Service Department Director John Kohler requests a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero thirty-two increasing the Pierce Township Cemetery rates effective January first of twenty twenty-five as attached.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we, uh, have any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none, uh, roll call please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes. All right, interim administrator, community development and planning director Eddie McCarthy, which I think we can throw away the first part of that. Do we need to amend that particular motion? Get rid of the interim part. All right, anyway, go ahead.
Whatever you want to do, I'm gonna.
A fire when ready.
So these three motions are all very similar. This pertains to the police operating levy. So, uh, I request a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-four zero three three, a resolution of necessity in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section fifty-seven oh five dot one nine J for two point seven mils.
There's gonna be some discussion on this one, so.
I, I will make that motion, but we have looked into this. I mean, we've done our restart, our homework on this one, but I, I will make the motion, that being said.
Okay. Um, for a second?
Yep.
Second. Do we have any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
I request a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-four oh three four, a resolution in accordance with Ohio, a resolution of necessity in accordance with Re- Ohio Revised Code Section fifty-seven oh five dot one nine J for two point eight mils.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes. All right, Eddie, you're still up.
Good. I request a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-four oh three five, a resolution of necessity in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section fifty-seven oh five dot one nine J for two point nine mils.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? The only thing I would add, if you're confused why we just did that three times at different amounts, we will only try to go for one levy. But when we turn these in, uh, to the, uh, auditor's office, the auditor's office will run the numbers to see what the, you know, what the amount would be that we would get from a levy of two point nine, two point eight, and two point seven mils. And that will give us the amount that they'll show us what number that would create. And now we can match that up to what our need is. And so that's why we pass them all so that we can have them run the numbers on each one of those individually. And that we took them up individually so that people would have an opportunity to see what we're doing. So that said, um, any further discussion on that matter? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman?
Yes, all right. So now we go to old business. Is there any old business anybody would like to discuss? Okay, seeing none, let's move on to, um, other business. Are we gonna do the appointment of officers or we hold that up to the cleanup meeting? It's up to you. We're gonna go with whatever you tell us to do. All right, so what we'll do is I will, um, I will nominate, um, Nick Kelly to be the chairman of the board for twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? I don't know if I can vote on this one.
I know it's tough. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, uh, any further discussion other than my whining over here? Um, seeing none, roll call please.
Who went second?
My second.
Who went first? Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes. So now we need to decide who the vice chair is gonna be.
Shoot, I didn't think about this. How do we typically rotate it?
I, I don't think there is for the vice chair. I don't think we've rotated it.
A little bit.
Doesn't matter to me, guys.
Yeah, I don't, I don't care. I'm just trying to be consistent. I mean, to some extent, barring some strenuating circumstance. Let's see, I was vice chair. It was I, who was chair before that?
I was.
Right. So I will nominate, uh, uh, Dr. Campbell as his vice chair.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, I thought you called for the vote.
No, 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 yeah. Don't be in a hurry. I mean, he's gonna start to worry about.
No hurry.
All right, with, uh, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
All right, um, we've done that. Now we need to move into executive session, correct? Unless there's any further discussion. Wait, uh, we're missing the line item for public comment. So let's do public comment now. Uh, is there anything, any, any public comment? Um, anyone would like to discuss? I mean, Stan, come on. Very good. Here, going once, going twice, gone. Um, all right, so not seeing anybody stepping forward. Let's move to executive session. Um, I'll entertain a motion to, to adjourn into executive session uh, as permitted by the Ohio Revised Code, Section one two one dot two two G one uh, to consider the employment dismissal, discipline, or compensation of a public employee. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Um, no reason to discuss. Um, let's do the roll call.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman?
Yes. Now, the second motion that I'll be looking for is a motion to adjourn into executive session as permitted by the Ohio Revised Code, Section one two one dot two two G eight to discuss confidential information related to an economic development prospect. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second roll call, Debbie.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman?
Yes. The third motion I'll be looking for is a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to R C one two one dot two two G four for the purpose of preparing, conducting, and reviewing bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation and other conditions of their employment. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, Debbie.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Uh, yes, uh, as always, we may or may not come out of this session with some action. Um, it's likely we will not, but in the event that we do, you're certainly welcome to hang around. The staff have prepared some entertainment for you, so they'll be doing a little dance for you, song and dance for Christmas. And I believe that Chief Wright, I believe Chief Wright's dressing up like an elf. So I'd stick around for that, but we'll be right back.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll pop in and see you. Are you going to be there tomorrow?
Uh, two o'clock. I'm there two o'clock.
All right, we're uh back in session. Can I have a motion um to close executive session?
Second.
Okay, with motion second, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Candelaus?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes, now can I have a motion to re-enter the regular session?
No move, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to re-enter. Um, roll call please.
Mr. Candelaus?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And Mr.?
Yes. Uh, while we talked about a great many things, um, the board will not be taking any further action tonight. So at this point, we all move to adjournment.
So.
We have a motion. A motion and a second, roll call please.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Candelaus?
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes, we are now adjourned.